Meeting of the Overview Scrutiny Management Board. My name is councillor Philip Roberts. I am the chairman of this board. Councillor Kane Parkinson, vice chairman of the board, is also in attendance. Streaming arrangements. Can I remind you that the audio visual feed of this formal public meeting is being broadcast live by the county council's website and all comments will remain accessible online as the meeting recording remains on the council's website. And with this in mind, I would like to welcome members of the public and press watching this live. Welcome to the following executive councillors and executive support councillors who are attending our meeting today. Councillor Sean Matthews, leader of the council. Councillor Tom Catton, executive councillor for resources. And councillor Natalie Oliver, executive councillor for children's services. The CLT present, welcome to the following members of the corporate leadership team. Heather Sandy. There she is. And Michelle Grady. Thank you. Health and safety. There was no fire drill planned this morning. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, we'll need to leave the chamber and exit the building via the front doors and congregate in the car park at the front of the building where we will await further instructions. Can I remind everyone to ensure their mobiles, laptops and tablets are on silent for the duration of this meeting? The hearing loop is now activated. Speaking etiquette. Request to speak will be collated by the vice chairman. If you wish to speak during the meeting, can you please raise your hand and the vice chairman will make a note. We will try and ensure that everyone has the opportunity to ask questions, make contributions. Therefore, I would appreciate contributions to be concise and also that you indicate early when you wish to speak. And if you could ask questions, one or two at a time, just to allow the executives to answer, that'd be great. Well, now move on to the formal agenda of this meeting. Emily, do we have any apologies?
Thank you, chairman. We have received apologies from Emile Van der Zee and if I could also note apologies from Debbie Barnes and Andrew Crocombe.
Members of the board are reminded that you only need to declare any relevant interests which have not been declared on your declaration of pecuniary interest form. Do any members have any wish, any members wish to declare any interests? Okay. The minutes of the meeting held on the 20th of September. This is to confirm and sign the minutes from the last meeting of the board on the 25th of September 2025 as a correct record. These can be found on pages five to 12 of the agenda pack. Do I have a proposer? Councillor French and seconda councillor Brooks. Those in favour? Those against? And the abstentions? Thank you. Those minutes are agreed as a correct and accurate record. Announcements by the chairman and executive councillors and chief officers. Chairman announcements. I believe a previous chairman of the Overview Scrutiny Management Board may currently be unwell, a councillor Mark Whittington, so we wish him well. Executive councillor announcements. Are there any executive councillor announcements from councillor Sean Matthews? No. Councillor Tom Catton? No. Chief officer announcements? Are there any chief officer announcements from Heather Sandy? No. And also councillor Natalie Oliver. Missed you off. How rude. Any call-ins, Emily?
No, none received, chairman.
Emily, have we received any councillor calls for action?
No, none received.
Okay. Item seven. Better Belonging Lincolnshire. Sufficiency strategy for SEND and alternative provision for 2025 to 2028. This pre-decision scrutiny report can be found on pages 13 to 62 of the agenda pack. This report presents Lincolnshire's new Better Belonging SEND and Alternative Provision Sufficiency Strategy, which replaces the previous approach with a sector-wide vision promoting inclusion in mainstream education while strengthening specialist support where needed. The strategy aims to expand capacity across special schools, create mainstream SEND hubs and increase AP places, supported by 13.8 million of capital investment for 2024 to 2026. This executive is due to consider the report for a decision on the 4th of November. Our actions in terms of input requested from the board are that members of the Overview and Scrutiny Management Board consider the report and determine whether members support the recommendations to the executive set out on page 17 and agree that this board's comments to be passed on to the executive in relation to this item. This report will be presented by Katie Marsden, head of service, special educational needs and disabilities, with Eileen McMorro, programme manager for SEND and inclusion, Heather Sandy, executive director of children's services, and Martin Smith, assistant director for children's education and also present for the debate. Now over to Ms Marsden and Mrs McMorro. Thank you.
Thank you, chair. So this report that's being presented outlines the proposed three-year strategy, as you have said, chair, about how we propose to address our special educational needs and disabilities and alternative provision sufficiency in Lincolnshire. The strategy does align with our Better Belonging inclusion strategy and it aims to ensure that inclusive, local and sustainable for children and young people with additional needs and introduces a tiered model to managing the provision within Lincolnshire and, as you said, chair, supported by 13.8 million capital investment. The driver for this strategy has been the ongoing increase in demand for both SEND and AP provision. So if I go through what we mean by tiered provision in the model, what we've thought is it's not just about capital investment in supporting our children, young people with SEND needs. It's about first and foremost our workforce development and building the capacity within the workforce within our schools and across all our SEND support services in understanding what SEND needs are and identifying them early and making sure that we understand what that means and how we can then support them. So the strategy builds on and introduces new workforce development programmes for the workforce so that we can build that capacity across the school estate, both in mainstream, early years, post-16 and our special school estates in terms of that. It then has a three, three routes. So we have a mainstream route and that is separated into two. So it's about, again, enhancing our mainstream schools to, again, alongside the workforce development, to be able to provide and, and develop little support units for children within their wider school community. So not necessarily commissioned by the local authority for those with the HCP plans, but to support those children at the early onset of identified needs, to get in there early and act fast. And the strategy proposes to put a small amount of capital aside for those schools who have space but need a little bit of support in managing and creating those spaces for their wider school community. Alongside that, there is the second layer of the mainstream provision, which is that we propose the SEND hubs, where that's where the local authority itself will commission schools to and support them in developing SEND hubs, which are small classrooms that will house about 10 children of particular profiles of need, with transient places for our mainstream schools to also maybe integrate some children from their wider school community to also access provision there. They will be supported by a workforce development programme and supported by a quality effectiveness team that is under the, my colleague Kate Capel behind me, under her service, where they will be supported in, in understanding how they monitor the progress of the, of the children attending. But they will be provisions for children with EHC plans and they will be provisions that are more than the graduated approach to support that is expected in all, all schools, but the gap between that and a mate and a special school. So that's the proposal and we aim to, the strategy aims based on data that we would look to develop about 40 of hubs a year across all schools, both primary and secondary, so that children have a pathway through for their education. The next layer is then about expanding our existing special school estate. Obviously, there's been, what we've looked at doing is, is thinking a bit creatively about how we now do that and aligned it with the preparing for adulthood agenda that comes from central government. So the idea is that we work with our, the post-16 cohort within our special schools already, knowing that at some point gradually they will be moving out and moving on to their next destination for themselves. And that can be quite a challenging time and anxious time for parents and young people themselves when they've been within that close community. So we thought actually what we could do is support that, that move out, out of what they know their local community in the special school, in utilizing buildings within the state and allowing those post-16 cohorts to move on whilst they're attached to their special school and finish their, their education within that special school, but in a separate building, allowing us then to open up spaces and capacity for our school-aged children of a younger age to have, have opportunities to enter the special school for if that's what has been identified as their need. So, and then the, the third arm of our proposal is for alternative provision. So whilst the strategy is about inclusion, we do recognise that all our skills, all our skills, schools do still feel that they need to use permanent exclusions. And obviously what we're looking about is better belonging and we're trying to reduce those exclusions so children are supported within their school and we don't have to ask schools to resort to needing to use a permanent exclusion. So the strategy proposes that a small amount of capital is put aside so that we can enable schools to develop areas within their schools so that when children who have maybe neurodiverse needs become dysregulated, that they can allow those children to go to a separate area within the school, calm down, regulate themselves and then allow themselves to reintroduce back into the main classrooms, which hopefully enables their behaviours to be managed, they can settle and hopefully remain within the school, avoiding those permanent exclusions. So those three strands are how we propose to support our schools and to be more inclusive, but also nurture that belonging within their local community. That avoids then the need for children to be transported across the county at cost to a school that's somewhere else across the county so they can be educated within the local community, build those relationships and be able to contribute back into the local community. So that is the ethos of the strategy. Alongside that, it's to avoid the need to use, currently this is what we are using, is independent, non-maintained school placements. So by building the capacity within our local communities, within our mainstream schools and within our own special school estate, we mitigate the need to use the independent sector, which obviously is a cost avoidance for, for us as a council. So obviously, as you said, chair, earlier, the, the request is that the OSMB consider the report and support the strategy so that we can look to take forward the meeting of our children, young people in Lincolnshire's needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Elaine, would you like to add to that or?
Certainly. Thank you very much, chair. I suppose at this point as well, it's just to reference the, the capital allocation, the funding allocation associated with the strategy. The local authority, all local authorities receive something called a high-needs provision capital allocation from, from central government. We are proposing that funding from this pot will be utilised to support the capital development required in the strategy. There is currently 13.8 million, 3.5 remaining from 2425 and our 10.7, 288 million for 2526. This is an, this has been an annual grant since 2020 and we are anticipating that this will continue year on year, obviously with the demand and need within the SEND and AP arena. So therefore, the, the ask of, of OSMB and of executive is direction as to how we utilise the high-needs capital allocation funding and that's what will be used, utilised for this strategy. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen. Okay. We'll now move on to members' debate. I believe we've got a question straight away from councillor Hill.
Well, I'm not sure it's a question, chairman, and also I think we are invited to make comments, but I'll, obviously I'll, I'll just start with an overall comment to start with. I think it's no doubt that SEND funding is the major crisis facing all local authorities who provide children services and we are no exception. And I think we are, as has been said before, we are the last authority now which has yet to slip into going to statutory override. And the reason we are in that position, every other children's services authority in the country, I believe, is now in that situation. And the reason we are the last to go, so to speak, is the fact that we have, we had a hundred million pound capital programme to expand our special schools across the whole sector. And that did require, of course, prudential borrowing. So I just make the point, I don't want to start a borrowing debate here, but these are the dilemmas we have. Of course, that, that investment has saved a lot of money and I think when you refer to page 32, table 10, cost avoidance, that shows quite clearly on, on average now, the average cost of the, going to the independent sector is 70,000 pounds plus transport costs. That's rising dramatically. I have one, one case near me where we ask about £100,000 if, if it goes to, goes to the tribunal. And of course, the other thing we should need to remember is parents now can go to the tribunal following the, the act in 2014, I think it was, where unfortunately at the moment, 90, over 90% of tribunal cases are lost by the local authority. So it's a massive issue for, for local government in particular, in general, but again, for us, again, a really big issue. So I, I, I think I fully support the paper, but I suppose the question is, are we going far enough? Because this, this paper proposes that we just use the government allocation of, well, 13 million altogether. And I suppose the question that needs posing to the executive, bearing in mind the cost avoidance and table 10 makes it pretty clear, there's a massive saving of millions of pounds could be had by a further investment in, in-house provision. Unfortunately, the current government, like the previous government, refuses to actually do anything about this and it keeps being kicked into the long grass. So this problem is not going to go away. So I suppose the issue I have is that, should we be doing more? And the specific issue I also have is the Grantham project, which was agreed by the previous council over a year ago, hasn't proceeded. And really, I would like as part of the comments that the Grantham project proceeds without delay, so that, and table 10 there, they, it will, according to that, there'll be a payback period of less than two years, even if it's a bit more than that. That surely in pure financial terms is an opportunity which should not be lost. And it is disappointing, I suppose, that over a year later, the project's sitting there, all ready to go, all the permissions have been granted in terms of going through the council procedures and all that requires is the executive to give the green light for it. So I, I would like as part, and I don't know how we're going to handle this, but I would like, if it's not to be an amendment, I would like those comments to be supported by the committee. And I suppose I put that out there as, is that a reasonable comment to put forward that we, that we ask the executive proceed with and with, as soon as possible, with the specialist expansion project in Grantham and the executive also investigate other areas where an investment can be made in provision of SEN, in-house provision or in-county provision, which will actually be a massive cost avoidance. I think it's something the executive needs to consider pretty urgently and one would hope that they'll come forward. So before I ask any question, I'll put that, those comments on the table and I welcome a debate as to whether the rest of the Overview Scrutiny Committee feel that's a fair position which they would follow.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Martin?
Thank you very much, chair, and thank you councillor Hill for that question. Just on the point of Grantham, in terms of how it's presented within the, the strategy, Grantham is in design phase. We are progressing with that and it's going to be ready, hopefully with the completion around 26, 27. And we'll be coming back to scrutiny for the design and sign-off of the commissioning of works shortly after Christmas.
Councillor Hill.
Suppose it's for the executive then, so does that mean the executive have, have agreed that this project will proceed? Just so I'm aware then, let's see if we can take that away.
That's what's in the strategy. So yes, that's what this paper is all about. The, the Grantham project is included within this. Heather?
So, so it'll go through the individual decision-making for each of the schemes, so it'll come to scrutiny and then it'll go for the, the decision-making. So one of the, one of the, the things about this strategy is that we, we need to agree the overarching strategy and then we'll bring each decision through in accordance with the council's regulations so that we can agree, sign off on those funding. So, so yes, this is agreeing it in principle. It, it is, it was.
Sorry, we, it's already been agreed.
Yeah.
The previous, the council's current position is, it's agreed. So the issue is whether, all I'm asking is a commitment from the executive, which I think I've got, but it will proceed and the, as soon as the necessary design is done, it will come back.
So councillor Hill, I think it's strategically agreed previously. The individual decision-making on the scheme hasn't taken place. So that's the individual decision-making that will need to come through following the design work. But I think, yeah, I think in principle that agreement to continue it is part of this strategy.
So could I ask for a timescale then, please?
Councillor Oliver.
So I think that's due to come to scrutiny in January and is due to be built and operational, hopefully for September 26, but maybe January 27.
Councillor Oliver.
I think the whole point with this strategy here is the fact that when I took on this role, I was incredibly disappointed at how many children and families were waiting and how long they had been waiting for this provision. And that comes down to the previous administration. This strategy is all about our children in Lincolnshire. It's about being efficient. It's about getting this sorted and it's not about kicking it down the road, like the current Labour government are doing with the SEND strategy. So, yeah, just wanted to add that.
Chair, and that, I just think this was agreed by the previous council and I'm pleased that you are now proceeding with it. And I think the, the second part of the question is, are we going far enough? Is there a case, both in terms of financial, but more importantly in terms of the children? Should the council not just use the government money which is made available, should it actually put extra money in to proceed with that?
Natalie?
Yeah, the, the previous administration had every opportunity to deliver faster. You didn't decide to do that, so now we are doing that. So, yeah, we will be looking at more. We are currently budget-setting. We are delivering this strategy as a starter. We have huge issues, as you've already explained, nationally. We are also looking at that in terms of what we can do as a national party to put pressure on the government to ensure that our children and the children of the nation get the support that they need.
Thank you. Councillor Collier.
Thank you, chair. Thank you. I'm sorry, Kate, I can't see you very good. Okay. Thank you. It was just going back to what you were saying in your report there about you strive to get children fast into the needs they need, the special education needs they need. How fast can I ask? I mean, because when my daughter was at school, it was obvious from when she was tiny that she needed special education, but you used to call it then not the sends, but, and there wasn't the help like there is now. I mean, it's brilliant now, but it took two years of her being in mainstream school, getting further and further behind and not getting the help she needed. I do hope that's much quicker now that they get assessed and put into the suitable education needs they, they need.
Thank you councillor Collier. Yes, I mean, the idea of the, the proposal and the aim of the strategy is that with the workforce development and the training and building the capacity and experience of the workforce will be that teachers, support staff, whoever has contact with a child will be able to identify and understand what they're seeing, rather than seeing it maybe just as behaviour, will actually understand that maybe that behaviour, as we all know, is communicating something else underlying and so therefore, you know, will bring in and use the strategies that are there on, on our workforce development platform and modules, giving people those wider, wider opportunities to try and apply things. The idea is this, obviously we all know that the statutory process that stands now is quite time-consuming for everybody and for so many families, probably quite traumatic. You know, they, they, they see they need, they want, they see their child needs help. So the idea is that actually we get that support in without the need for that statutory process. So that's part of why the, the proposal and the new strategy is tiered, so that actually it has that layer of workforce development, that we build that capacity and the understanding. So it becomes, I suppose, business as usual, that we don't segregate our children with special education needs, they become part of the community. It is that better belonging and for those whose needs are such so complex, then actually the, the capacity within our special school estate should there be free, should be there for them, available. So when it's identified, needed, they can get in quickly. That's the proposal of the strategy.
Thank you, Katie. Councillor Davies.
Thank you. I'd start by a big thanks, actually. Over the last five years, Grantham has seen a significant investment in its special educational needs provision. It's gone down extremely well with the public. It's, it's one of those areas, and I'm sure colleagues would agree, actually, you, you think you're going to get emails about potholes all the time and occasionally we do, but actually the, the emails and the correspondence and the communications I've had from parents talking about this exact issue reminds me, it's quite a grounding experience, isn't it? I know there are people in the chamber who've got more direct experience of this than me. To answer councillor Hill's specific query, I suppose, yes, I would support further investment. In the past, I and we have supported borrowing, prudential, careful borrowing, to support this kind of investment, to make it happy. And I would ask that the executive do bear that in mind as they enter the budget-setting process, that while I appreciate borrowing is difficult, these are areas that affect people's lives. And councillor Collier makes an excellent point about the timescale for some of these things to happen. And I know, you know, a lot of the time it's about children, particularly with complex needs, they need a space and if the space doesn't exist, you can't conjure it overnight. So no amount of warm words about the future really helps with something that's needed today. In terms of specific questions, may I ask, you, you're referring, you see, you're benchmarking public alchemy, I think, is your, your data provider. And one of the things you look at, particularly over the last six months, but even going back further, is that historically them and others within the sector nationally are underestimating by some variance the number of children entering this process. For example, if we look at EHPD allocations for the last six months, there's something like estimated 20% lower than was predicted back in 2022. My question is, how are we allowing for the variance here in terms of your allocation analysis? Because if we are estimating, you know, 100 children are going to need support next year and it turns out to be 120 based on current trajectories, when I look at that chart on page 23, sorry, the, the map on page 23, it almost blows the numbers out of the water, doesn't it? And I just wondered, how are you allowing for that, that range within your calculations, please?
So thank you councillor Davies for, for that question. So you're absolutely right. Over the, the last five, six, seven years really, as part of the previous strategy and the future strategy, we've conducted a number of exercises around forecasting and, and looking at all of the data sets to try and see where the changes have been, variations, and how has that played out as we expected it to. We've just commenced again another cycle and in addition to the one that's included in the report, just to double check that, because you're quite right, as the potential reforms to the SEND system have come on, we've seen a significant increase for requests to assess. We were 148 on average a month last year, we're running at about 210. And if you apply the, a month, and if you apply the percentages to that, the volume, you're going to have more people presenting. So we're having a really, keeping a really close eye on this. I think as well, our progress towards looking at postcode's has been really helpful, looking at what happens within a postcode planning area so that we can be really confident on where our proposals are cited. You know, are we putting the additionality into the right places to avoid that, that costly transport as well? I think one of the things that we've found troublesome, not impossible, but troublesome to predict, is that level of import. So as Lincolnshire, we're a net importer of, of young people with needs coming into the local area, so it's hard to second guess that. But we have captured it and we've tried to build it in, but that's probably one of the riskier areas for us to predict because one month you might have six young people move into the area, then you might have three months with nobody, and then you might have a month of, of 20 children coming into the area. And so we've been really careful not to develop proposals that will create oversupply. Our risk also around the SEMH school. If the SEMH school gets signed off and approved by government, that will be a significant solution to sufficiency and efficiency on the high need spend. So we're just keeping that under review and as councillor Oliver says, we'll probably have to make amendments as we go along, particularly if there are any announcements around the SEMH school or not, in which case we'll have to rethink. But what I would say is in the partnership work through the SEND UP board and with our school leaders, our schools are really inspiring in terms of wanting to be part of finding addition. addition, an additional solution and a layer within a system that's more than mainstream or special. And I think that indicates the willingness of the system wanting to be part of the solution, as well as finding cost efficient ways of, of providing that education. Does that help councillor Davis? I mean, we'll keep revisiting it. We'll keep looking at it. But as I say, we've done this cycle of data analysis probably four times now, and we'll keep building on that and making that picture as clear as possible that we're following the right kind of steps.
Councillor Davis?
Yeah, thank you. That does help. That's very useful. I suppose my question would be, do we keep as a KPI what that, where that backlog sets, sits in terms of people who have applied, gone through mediation, gone through their application, been granted an EHCP, are requiring an additional level of service and support, but haven't yet got it? You know, those, the, the to be done section, I just wonder what, if we monitor that number and do we report that back anywhere?
Yeah, thank you. So another part of the Send Up Board, the, sorry, the Special Educational Needs and Alternative Provision Partnership Board, which is schools, the local authority, Lincolnshire Parent Care Reform, et cetera. We, we keep an oversight of what the data is saying, and we also look at what the offer is in the system. So how can needs be met? Kind of park the EHCP SEND system, but how can needs be met in the community? And that's led to some really fruitful conversations with our family hubs, with speech language therapy being available through family hubs, through other partner agencies providing and refining their offer. So you don't need an EHCP to access that offer. You can access the support through your community. And we continue to build on that. And we recognise that where we get that offer right, it can make the biggest difference. So the reason why I mentioned speech and language particularly, I think in the last 12 months, we've had a 34% increase in new EHCPs that are related to speech and language. And so rather than thinking of the usual speech and language therapy services, et cetera, that's why we've responded as a partnership and put that offer into our family hubs, and worked with our schools to share best practice and resource guides to try and meet those needs earlier on in the journey, rather than holding the needs being met just by the EHCP. I hope that kind of makes sense. The EHCP in itself doesn't meet the need. It's a legal document. It's actually what you do to, to intervene and work with young people to make progress.
Thank you, Martin. Councillor Finley.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the report. I get the heat map, and obviously there's clearly a demand for, for these hubs across the county. But my, my thinking behind it was that if there's a high demand and you're looking for willing hosts to establish hubs, and you're aiming for 40 a year, then my thinking beyond it was that if you're searching for hubs to set up at 40 a year, is it a first come, first, first served basis? Or is there a strategic pattern of how you plan to distribute evenly across the county? Obviously, to prevent, or having to transport, you know, around the county, it really thought, got me thinking, it needs to be distributed evenly. And I didn't see in here, maybe I missed it, but I didn't see in here how it was planned to be distributed evenly based on a willingness to, and from the second point of it was, what sort of time scale, if you plan to make, from the willing host point of view, steps forward and goes, we're willing to do it, what sort of time scale does it take to, from the acceptance to be willing host, to actually up and running and getting it fully functional? So there were two, I hope that's not too complicated for you.
No, that's, that's a really, really good question. So, willing hosts, I, I, I guess, subject to the decision making, obviously, of the strategy and going to executive next week. We've already met with schools. We invited all of the willing hosts who, who were targeted, as we would like you to be part of the conversation. So it was to gauge interest, I think Eileen will comment, but we, I think we had 45, 50 schools in the room up at BG, sorry, Bishop University a few weeks ago, to really kind of explain the proposal, the need, the rationale, what it would look like, what were the benefits for them, what were the benefits for the broader system, what were the benefits for, most importantly, children and young people. And there was an amazing level of engagement. It was inspirational to, to speak to those school leaders. And, and they would like it to open ASAP, you know, three or four weeks. However, in terms of timeline, depending which pathway, if it's an academy, once the strategy's been signed off, a business case for an academy school would need to be written. That needs to be submitted to the regional director's office. That needs to go to the head teacher board with available slots. Then we would need to commence recruitment, training, induction, and then placement of children. So that could be anything between six months to 12 months. In reality, for a maintained school, the pathway would be for us to agree, develop a business case, present it at Children, Young People and Culture, sorry, Children and Culture Committee for the local authority to agree its redesignation, to have a mainstream hub on site. And that's then also subject to building works. Now, some of the building works in some of these hubs are very, very minor. Amendment of a wall, a door, toilet facilities. Some of them are a bit more at higher level, removal of an entire wall or more walls, and a small extension. There's a whole variety of options. So there isn't a quick fix, but the team are determined to work at scale and make progress quickly, because each of those hubs, as we see it, meets children's needs better locally, reduces transport costs, but also is a much more efficient commitment on the high needs block, which we know is under pressure and an overspending. But that additional commitment of, say, 20,000 per place is a saving of 50,000 per place to the local authority. And when you multiply that by the numbers that are in the system, that's a significant saving, which then means we can do other things with funding. So, a complex answer, but hopefully that, that clarified how we've targeted and invited willing participants and also set out the timeframes. And Eileen, I don't know if you want to clarify any of those mechanisms that I just shared?
Yeah, thank you very much, Martin. So, as Martin referenced, we, we met with a series of, I think it was nearer 60 schools, actually. So, sorry to, on that one. And we are currently visiting, we've had 24 schools come forward so far with further schools who weren't at the event also expressing. We've also got meetings with three academy trusts with a large number of schools within their trust to start working on a, a trust approach to hubs as well with those. So lots of interest. I think it's fair to acknowledge and recognise that as we are remodelling and working with surplus accommodation as it currently stands, we are reliant on schools, A, having a willingness, commitment, an inclusive attitude, and space for us to be able to do the work. There, as birth rates are dropping in Lincolnshire, we are seeing plenty of space becoming available in our primary schools, but that maybe isn't necessarily reflected in our secondaries yet. So as we go through the strategy, we may need to consider our approach for hubs in our secondaries. And it may be that we require smaller build projects to ensure. I'm working very closely with the basic need, with Matt Clayton's team within Children's Services. So where there are basic need projects, we can also then include SEND hubs and AP hubs already in the new builds.
Thank you, Eileen. Yes, councillor Finley.
Thank you for that. So, there's no actual time scale on it. It's just a procedure. And it was a two-part question, so hopefully I'll come and allow my second question. Thank you. So for the first part of the question, obviously from a proportionality, proportionality point of view, it is first come, first served?
No, it's not. So we did a proportionality.
That's fine then. Yeah, that's fine.
So on table eight, you'll see there's a, a reference to ratios
Yeah.
in the paper. And that references the number of hubs we need in each locality. So for every two that we put into Lincoln, we would need to put four in South Holland. So we're working on that basis and prioritising the schools in the localities where we have greatest demand. And where they, if they're not forthcoming, we will then subsequently target that area to ensure that we can get schools on board.
Thank you. That was the two-part for one question. The second question is, do you, because obviously these, these sends are independent and isolated from mainstream. Is that correct? Good, good. I'm just thinking, do you approach colleges? Because like you say, the Skegness has got a new tech college. And if there's facility, is there a new tech college and you're looking for a host? Is that a possibility? Or does that not come under an application point of view?
I would say there are, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, there are a number of conversations going on with Skegness Tech in terms of how that space is going to be utilised. But it hasn't been included as part of the strategy because the conversations aren't that far yet.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Finley. Councillor Corey.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to take us back to the, to councillor Hill and councillor Davis' acknowledgement of the increasing pressures of SEND and alternative provision. Please understand that we want to continue on that same trajectory, that, that same impetus to go further and faster, and the, the, the same pressures and requests that we were putting under, putting on our offices when, when we ran the, when we'd run the council. Also, but we need to accept the, the pressures that, that Martin Smith and Eileen McMorrogh have just highlighted with how do you plan for changing needs of children when we've got population changes and we've got children coming into the county that we didn't, we, we didn't, we weren't aware of before they presented themselves. And then we have to provide those needs for us, so, for them. So that's all we were, we're trying to do, to give support to our officers, to say, please continue with this. We, we, we were doing it really well. We were supporting you. We want to invest. And we want these, these, these schemes and these projects to come forward because we know there's an increasing need, something that we can't always, always plan for, except we know that by investing in them, we're going to ensure that, one, that we save money, but two, we give these children the needs they want. So it was a supportive statement. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Corey. Councillor Dilks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I do welcome the paper. I, I agree with councillor Hill, you know, talking to people at various conferences and elsewhere. You know, it's a national crisis, SEND, there's no getting away from that. We've seen a huge increase, yes, since the, since, since the epidemic Covid. I mean, I'm, I'm not sure whether it is a blip, you know, that we're going to see even out over the years. And that's kind of a question, really, if we expect that. Or are we just recognising what was always there now, better? It is a sort of a, a question. I also do, I do recognise what the previous administration did in, in, you know, trying to sort of build more structure across Lincolnshire for the thing. And, and so, and so on that, I would sort of hope that the comments from this committee to exec would be, would include at least, and I recognise what, what, what you've said, councillor Oliver and others, that, you know, it's not, it hasn't, you know, the Grantham Specialist Project is, is going to go ahead. But I would hope that we could say and, and ask that the Grantham Specialist Project goes ahead without any delay, you know, as, as quickly as possible, if I could put it that way. I had a couple of questions, if I may. And they were, I mean, on the blip, you know, I mean, I, I think we're all aware, you know, what Mr. Farad said a few months ago about SEND. He said he thought that, you know, kids that had special needs were being over diagnosed. And that caused a big fury. He may have stepped back from that, I'm not sure. But, so I do welcome the, the focus that we're, we're putting on SEND today. But I, I also concur with the, are we doing enough for it? I've got two daughters who are primary school teachers. And, you know, as councillor Collier said, you know, teachers see the, the needs in these children very early when they come into reception class. And it is very frustrating when you are teachers to know how long it takes to get any sort of extra support for children who have extra needs. And, and that leads me to my, kind of, to a question on the hubs. We've heard, thank you, Martin, about, you know, the need for the doors to be in the right places and, and the space and all the rest of it. But it's not just about that, is it? It's, to me, it's about the quality of the people who are giving the tuition. So I seem to remember some years ago, there was, the previous government hoped or brought in a, a target for every school to have a SEND qualified teacher. How are we doing on that in Lincolnshire? And is that going to be a requirement of the hubs, that they have a SEND qualified teacher? It is a extra qualification, I believe, for a teacher. One of my daughters went, she got about three quarters of the way through it, but fam, it was very, very time consuming. She didn't really think, and, and it was not in Lincolnshire, I have to say. She was, felt she wasn't getting the support from the school to actually get on with the requirements. And she had to give it up at an advanced stage. And she was also raising three young kids at the same time. So I understand that. But, so I'm really asking on, on that point, you know, have we got sufficient qualified SEND teachers? What are we doing if we haven't to support those teachers to go and get the qualification, to make sure that Lincolnshire does give the best possible support to those children who need it? I think I'm, I think I'm just about there. I, I, I heard what councillor Oliver said about the Labour government, we're kicking it down the road. And they certainly have, as I understand it, delayed, you know, and, and put off the, the review or whatever they're going to do, the changes, reform, if I might use that word, on SEND. And it's, it's now, it was due, wasn't it, in the autumn? And they put it off to the New Year. So I hope that means that, you know, they're looking at it carefully and it's going to have the right answers. But we'll wait and see, won't we? Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Dilks. Heather.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Dilks. So if I start and then on some of the more technical detail, the team will come in. So you're absolutely right. The White Paper has been delayed until January, is what the department are saying. And obviously, for, for local government, that's really difficult because, as everybody's outlined, we're all under a significant amount of pressure. And parents are understandably anxious about the reforms. And so the, what we're seeing is, a reaction to that is, well, I'll get my EHCP done now before the reforms come in. So that's why we're seeing a significant increase at the moment. It also makes the planning really difficult because we're planning for a system where children can be included in mainstream. And we would love the legislation to follow that, to support that and to promote that and to give those rights to those families, that they'll get the support they need to meet their children's needs. But we are moving in a world that is changing. And I think it's important we keep moving in that space. We've debated long and hard as officers. And with the executive, you know, do you wait? We don't feel we can wait. We need to keep moving. We need to expand. We need to refresh what we're doing and continue to develop that. So I think that's really important. In terms of the comments around, could we go further? This is the, the, the proposal in this paper is based on the budget that we've got, that is through the, the DFA grant. All of the comments from scrutiny are, will be considered by the exec in, in due course at the executive meeting. And they'll be debated and discussed at that meeting. And I think that's the right process. Executive councillor for Children's Services is here to listen to the debate today. And then through the, the council process, she'll reflect on those comments as, as in the run up to that executive decision, as will her colleagues. In terms of, is it a blip? And, and are we recognising need better? So I think we're in a really difficult space. And I think it's really hard to have some of these discussions because they're sensitive discussions, because every parent wants the very best for their child. And so talk of over diagnosis has got some, some evidence base in the medical community. There are a lot of people looking at that now. The reality is, the 2014 reforms made a process through which parents had to go into a legal process in order to secure the right for their children to get provision and for the local authority to be able to give individual funding to schools or individual placements to children. So it escalated that in a way that we, if you look at all of the data from 2014, we have seen that gradual increase. And then it got steeper and it got steeper and it got steeper. And that's because that is the route that we currently have in policy. And it's based on lots of individual children. And we, you know, we don't look at individual entitlement like that in any other field in education. We don't, so that is what the government is looking at. That is what is being reviewed. Some members will know, I am on the expert advisory group for the reforms to the department. So I was particularly disappointed to see them delayed. so I was particularly disappointed to see them delayed and, but I do think you're right, councillor Dilks, it is because this is a complex process and they're wanting to make sure that they get it right. It doesn't stop the fact that we are left in an unsustainable position and that is really difficult. So I think in terms of the are we doing enough in this paper and could we go further, I think that we're doing what we can with the budget that we've got and we have ambitious plans going forward and we have ambitious plans widening what we're doing so that we're not just looking at hopes, we're really broadening that tiered approach. All of your comments will be considered at executive when that goes through. And I think you're really, really correct in terms of the SEND, whatever provision we're talking about, the physical space is really important, but it's not the most important thing. What is really important is the ethos of the school and the training of the staff. So that we have been doing some work to really upskill the members of staff we've got in, but we want to see that reform bring about national change around that, we want to see a national priority put through teacher training right from the very beginning all the way through to head teachers. We want head teachers to be skilled in SEND, that it's not just the SEND Co's job so that we don't get people like your daughter going to lead special educational needs and not feeling that they've got the support. We want that expertise right through schools up to CEOs and throughout. In terms, I'll hand over to Martin on your more technical aspect, if that's okay. Thank you.
Thanks Heather and thank you councillor Dilks for those questions. So I'll start off with SEND is a continuum of need within mainstream hubs, whatever the provision, through to special schools. So that as a council, we've commissioned and provided workforce development for the last three, four years and we've just recently commissioned it for the future, so that as a offer to the system, we've got a baseline offer of workforce development that can be accessed remotely at any time through the modules. I think we've got about 94% of schools engaged in the offer and they've completed something like 16,000 modules of half hour bite sized sessions and that can be about fetal alcohol syndrome, it can be about ASD, it could be about all sorts of different conditions. So we've got that kind of as a backdrop. I just wanted to also mention the work of our Teaching School Hub run by LEED, which is a multi-academy trust in Lincolnshire and they are a really key strategic partner. And councillor Oliver observed a leadership briefing recently out on the east coast where our Teaching School Hub bring together examples of best practice and also offer DFE commissioned programmes. So we offer locally the MPQ, sorry, the MPQ in SEND and that's been offered to all schools and shared to all schools and the offer from the Teaching School Hub also covers a number of programmes that we've said as a partnership, this is what the system's saying it needs, can we have that offer locally and can we support that? So we've got things like SEND network meetings, sensory approaches to understanding and meeting students' needs, adaptive teacher pathways and a number of other activities. Really good take up. So we've invested in that skill, but obviously as a workforce of what's probably now something like 9,000 to 12,000 members of staff within schools, roughly, I can only comment on maintained schools, but that's the ballpark figure. There is a real momentum and an energy to developing skills, but it'll take time. Coordinating that with what the mainstream hub offer looks like and how it's different is the mainstream hub offer is for young people who probably can be part of that bridge between mainstream and special and that's why that class size of 10 approximately is supported by a class teacher, two TAs and a pastoral worker. So that's really kind of an enhancement. It's not the same as a special school provision, that's different, but that is really first rate kind of support and quality that we're going to fund within the mainstream hubs. We know that the White Paper is maybe going to change the system, but we know as well that all of the talk within the White Paper is around early intervention and being able to support children on a continuum of need and whatever we call it in the future, that model that we're suggesting still fits that kind of principle of intervention and I'm not sure if we did completely clarify earlier, but the benefit of the mainstream hub is you can get that enhancement, but you can also get the benefits of that day-to-day mainstream schooling, those activities, events, social opportunities on your community site and that we feel as a team is equally as important for the children to feel like they belong rather than they belong 45 miles away in another setting. So that's where we're coming from. I hope that answered all of your questions and I covered all the points that you made.
Yeah, thank you, thank you both for those answers, I think they were really helpful. I've just got to say, you know, to me, you know, it is an investment in these children and if we don't invest what is needed, you know, we're asking for trouble later on when they, when they grow up a bit or don't grow up or whatever happens. So I really, I do remember sitting here, I think it was about a dozen years ago and seeing a paper coming from what used to be Children's Services that was talking about earlier interventions to sort these things out, so I hope we don't take as long as, you know, as it's taken to get to this. And that's a national thing, not a sort of a local thing. I just wanted to say I really welcome the principle of the hubs in mainstream schools because, you know, if you try and keep a child with SEND needs within a mainstream class or school, you know, one child can disrupt an entire learning experience for the rest of the kids. We all know that and so the hubs within the schools, I think, I hope will work. So thank you for that.
Thank you councillor Dilks. Councillor Brooks.
Thank you Chair. Regarding councillor Dilks there, I fully understand regarding one child can totally disrupt a whole class and it stops their learning, as I've experienced that myself. I fully support the paper. Are we doing enough? At the minute, I think we are and we're doing the best we can. Regarding the event at BGU, was it like maintained schools that was only invited or was every single school invited? I noticed you said a timescale of six to 12 months for academies, you never gave a timescale for maintained schools. Is that because they're prioritised or is it no priority? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Brooks. I will bring Eileen just in a moment if I get any of it correct. The caveat on the timeframes really is subject to the decision making, so if it's a really straightforward amendment to a building, you know, literally a caretaker could do it, then that speeds it up. If it requires any design, phase works, that builds in different steps. The other challenge is sequencing these so that we get the right decisions put forward where the particular demand is for scrutiny to commit and to executive to commit to those individual commissions as well. In terms of timeframes for the RD's office, they've been really supportive in the previous rounds, they've allowed, regional director, sorry. So the regional director, they're the decision maker, like you are for maintained schools, they are the decision maker for academies and they were really supportive in allowing kind of block proposals to go through so we could take five, six through at a time. For our compliance within the local authority, we need to treat them in a slightly different way, so we need to bring each decision through and without completely blocking up the democratic process within individual papers, we've just got to manage it quite carefully. We're working on ways around to do that really efficiently and make that slicker and councillor Oliver's very supportive of making it as efficient as possible, but we need to also do it in a compliant way. In terms of academies, Eileen, I don't know if you can remember the split, we didn't, we don't necessarily think academy maintained for this, it's more we all provide education to Lincolnshire's children and we all need to find a solution together, but I don't know if Eileen, you have got a feel of what the balance was?
We obviously have greater, the majority of our secondaries are academies, so all of our academies coming forward for the secondary hubs will be through that DFE process. We have a higher percentage of our local authority maintained within our primaries, so at the moment it's currently sitting at around, I think we're working with 11 local authority maintained primaries to be able to work through that system. It's also just worth noting in terms of the decision-making process, we also have a consultation period prior to the business cases to go through as well, which takes a minimum of four weeks, it's a minimum four week consultation period and then obviously the outcome of that has to be, has to be assessed, there's a due process. So, and then if I could just come back to your original question around how the original ones were prioritised, we undertook a desktop survey of school sites to identify those with surplus accommodation against their pan, against their number on roll and identified whether there was spare classrooms. So it was any school who was identified as having potentially either a spare classroom or surplus resource accommodation that could be remodelled was identified to be invited so that we could speed up the capital programme element of it.
Heather.
Yeah, can I just add just in terms of being clear around what we, we've done a really careful analysis of where we need the spaces and that's really important because of the link to transport here. So what we need to make sure is that we're placing children as close to home as possible because otherwise we end up with, we all, SEND system creates significant pressures for home-to-school transport colleagues. It's financially the biggest factor in terms of that, so this, so where we are, when we talk about prioritising schools, we have a matrix, we're really clear about how we need to do that and it's done on where we need the places rather than on who comes forward first or on who we can get through fastest because in the long term, we need to make sure we've got them in the right places.
Thank you Heather. Yes.
All the schools were invited who were identified as having potentially surplus accommodation.
Thank you. Councillor Hill.
Just to follow up on, I have a question, but following up on some of the comments, I think part of the reforms is to encourage, shall I put it that way, academies not to press the exclusion button and actually have, deal with children on site, hopefully that is quite a simple one which when these reforms finally come to light, we'll deal with that. And following up from councillor Corey's comments, yes, there was, I mean, a hundred million pound building programme which was council's own funding, that was a massive commitment and I think all the debate we're having now is despite that, does the council need to go further? And I stress the point, what we're saying at the moment is we're only going to spend what the government's given us and I suppose the debate for the budget really, it's not for just now, is in the budget which is upcoming, will the council actually allocate more of its own money to this, to this project? Coming to the question on 1.86, obviously a big sort of elephant in the room is the new free school, the free special school in Sleaford when it happens, if it happens and of course we await a decision from the government and we don't really know at the moment. So is there a timescale because that will make a big difference to the provision across the county? There is an issue about transport which Heather referred to because obviously there's a lot of demand in South Holland, so there could be a cost pressure on the council, but I just wonder, first of all, do we know when we might finally get a decision and secondly, if we, the government decides not to proceed on those lines, what is the plan?
Thank you Heather.
So currently we don't, we don't have an indication in terms of when we'll get a decision on that and I think it's linked to all of the reforms and whether they want to invest in the top tier specialist provision or whether they want that money to be used for further schemes like the one that we're looking at now. So in terms of what's the plan, I think we have a plan in this strategy that we can accelerate or decelerate, so I don't feel we need a separate plan for if that doesn't happen. I think if that doesn't happen and should we not get that funding, then obviously we'll work with council and scrutiny and we'll make some decisions to adjust the plan that we've got currently, but we have a plan that we could bring forward.
And just on, if I come back, there's the, on the plan, it's 13 million from the government and it says 7 million from the council for building stuff, could somebody just explain what that means? 7 million does sound a lot for building.
Yeah, so that's councillor Hill, that's the match funding for the SEMH school as part of the free school.
So we will have to, or the, I know the council has currently committed that 7 million.
Yes, yeah.
So if the scheme goes ahead, again, the 7 million will have to be provided, which is in the current budget.
Yeah, so it's in the capital budget, yeah.
Thank you. Councillor Parkinson.
Thank you so much. I'm not going to make this into a planning meeting, but I think it's an important point to raise that when we're looking at the current need required, obviously there's going to be a significant population growth in a lot of these areas, the one in my areas I'm obviously aware of and councillor Davies is aware of is the population growth, the housing growth that you're seeing in Grantham. So when we're looking at this plan, is this based purely on current need or are we also forecasting need projections effectively for additional SEND hubs that will be required as they keep building tens of thousands of homes?
Yeah, so I think there's a couple of bits within your question there. So there is the demand for places and children arriving and needing an education, but then there's also what happens in a local area. So within a postcode, we might have a particularly high number of requests to assess for an EHCP or a high number of young people who have an EHCP. So there's lots of layers. As part of our transformation work, we've appointed a SEND placement planning officer who's kind of taken all of those data sets to create kind of that curve, that chart of everything we know, birth rates, trends and patterns, popular schools etcetera, to try and accommodate that. We've also looked at the properties themselves, so it's quite interesting to look at some properties, particularly secondary schools that maybe have blocks of two or three classrooms that are no longer in use would be ideal as a little SEND mainstream hub and that's the kind of opportunities we're taking. So we factored it in. There's always a caveat with the forecasting, you know, we've taken the concept of new builds, sorry, new developments within local areas, we do have a view of that and our team, Matt Clayton and the team are really skilled at forecasting. We also know that some of those big developments sound like they're going to produce a lot of young people, history's currently showing us that that's not necessarily the case and some of those developments have been delayed. So we factored it in as much as we can, there's no cast iron guarantee. What we do know though is with the hubs that we would want to create, we're fairly confident very swiftly we would be able to fill them and obviously once that's part of ordinarily available provision, that's always there for when children move in, move out, move to another school as well. So it's forecasted, but no cast iron guarantees.
Okay. One of the reasons why I ask is I actually had an email last week from David Wilson Homes about another post site that they're looking for feedback on, which is next to the Prince William and Gloucester Barracks, they're going to build some more houses on. Within that proposal, they've also mentioned about the opportunity to build a new school. So I'm presuming that we'll be having conversations with them that, say within the funding from section 106, if it is to go ahead, that when the new school is built, that we could look to utilise that bill to build a bigger SEND provision within that school in that area? Because that would make a lot of sense to me, if you build a new school, let's make sure the design actually has the SEND built within it to become almost a hub in that area.
Yeah, so section 106 conversations, I think we did this at scrutiny as well, but section 106 conversations are taking place within another directorate within the council. However, they're really closely linked in to children's and education as well as highways etcetera. So there's a conversation that could be had at that time, obviously within the section 106 debates that take place and then the subsequent agreements with developers, they'll be going through a process of kind of prioritisation where that contribution's needed most. Section 106 wouldn't necessarily be the answer to all local needs, therefore we would have to safeguard against prioritisation to the most pressing need in the area such as highways or health offer.
Thank you Martin. Councillor Brook.
Thank you Chair. Just coming back on the classroom thing, I was just thinking, how do you find out if they've got a spare classroom or two? Do you contact every single school? Because I'm sure that there's some schools you could contact, they go, well, we could just adjust it and we could have a spare classroom. So that's what I'm getting at, thank you.
Yeah, really good question. So we don't, we haven't had to do anything to identify the spare classrooms because as of another statutory duty that's luckily nothing to do with Katie or Kate today, it's nothing to do with SEND, we have a stat duty around place planning and SEND, sorry, obsessed with SEND, and sufficiency, so we have a duty to make sure that there is a place available for every child across maintained and academies. As part of that, we have to do an annual capacity assessment and as part of that, we have to take in the numbers on roll, their pupil admission number and also compare that with a curriculum analysis of this is a typical curriculum, this is the estate that you would need to deliver it, more so in secondary and that calculation determines this is how many classrooms you've got, this is how many classrooms you need, this is how many children are on roll, you do the maths and you suddenly realise there are three classrooms that are no longer needed or required. They might be used for something else, but it's about that need, what's the most pressing need across the system.
Yeah, it's, sorry Chair, can I just add? Can I just add? I think all heads are aware of this strategy. So if they've, if they've got a classroom that they think could be used and they want to use it, they would know to approach Martin's team. So in terms of the message to heads, it's, it's an inclusive process. We're, we're not ruling anybody out. But so if you've, if head teachers are interested and want to, or governors are interested and want to talk to the head teacher about it, this is an ongoing programme. We are, our kind of vision is that by the end of this programme, every school will have some provision. So I think it's, we, we're not, there's, we're not excluding people, just to reassure you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Collier?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Just a question that's come up there. Are all heads aware of this, Heather? Because I've recently been to a school that Martin knows about now. He has got plenty of room, if needed, for a sends hub within the school and got three sends co-head teachers there.
Thank you, councillor Collier. So if they've read their bulletins and if they've been to head teacher briefings and if governors have read their governor briefings and if they've talked to other head teachers, then they should be aware of it. And if they're not, I guess, I guess there is a bit of a prompt there because we've been talking about this for a long time now. And we've launched this new strategy and we've, we've been to see head teachers all across the county. So it is an ongoing issue with the number of schools that we have in Lincolnshire is how do we ensure everybody knows? And there is a responsibility on the schools to read the communication that comes from the local authority. If they've done that, they know.
And can I just come back on that, please?
Yes.
Thank you, Heather, thank you. You know, we have a huge problem here now, don't we? First of all, I really support these sends hub. Going back to my own daughter, she had to be dragged out of my arms to go on a coach, it was a big coach in those days, to take her to school. She'd be screaming, I'd be crying. It was a terrible emotional time for both of us. Luckily, unfortunately, we were able to move closer because all she wanted to do was walk to school like the other children do. So I'm really in support of these schools. If they can have special education needs within existing schools or ones to be built in the future, that is a brilliant way for everybody's sanity, if you like. And children do thrive if they're amongst their own peers. They can go out and play with them afterwards, after school and make friends that way where they're isolated when they have to go to separate schools. But what is worrying for me is we know that the birth rate is going down in children, but sends needs are going up. What is happening? Is there an investigation going into this? I mean, is there any studies going on? We can't keep blaming Covid, I feel. Something else is going. I've got lots of theories and people keep saying things. Is there an actual investigation going on about this?
So, so if I, I mean, if I start councillor Collier, so there's been a number of reviews and there's been a number of examinations that. So send in and of itself is a legal definition, it's not a diagnosis. There are multiple diagnoses that result in children having special educational needs and disabilities. So there are lots of levers outside of need that can make that go up and go down. So if we, if we change the threshold and said you can only get an EHCP under a certain set of circumstances, numbers would fall. If we said you can get an EHCP under these circumstances and we lowered that kind of marker at which we would give an EHCP, then numbers would rise. And I think that there is a lot of research being done, a lot of evidence that since the 2014 reforms, we've seen a shifting to more diagnosis or more, more identification of send rather than, there has been an increase in diagnosis in certain areas as well. So I think it's about, for me, as a country, we need to think about, so how do we meet the need? So if we've got this enhanced need, and I do think we're seeing more complexity in schools, I do, head teachers are telling us they're seeing more complexity than they did 10, 15 years ago. So then how do we nationally evolve to meet that? Because the answer cannot be to take those children out of their community schools and into specialist settings at the rate we're doing currently. Otherwise, we can't afford it and children will be segregated to an extent that is, is not desirable. So for me, it's about how do we respond to that emerging need so that it doesn't need a label, so that we've got really well-trained staff in our schools, we've got the right resource bases, we've got the right funding, so we can meet that need. And some of that need, we can de-escalate pretty quickly. And I think, go back to councillor Dilks' comment about the paper 12 years ago, talking about meeting, I think we do meet need a lot earlier. I think the skills of the teachers in our schools is amazing. I think they do a really, really, really good job. The system says escalate, escalate, escalate and get an EHCP. And I think our schools are working incredibly hard to meet need early. So I think there is, my worry every time we say, well, we need to understand it better is we kick the reform down the road. And actually, we do understand it, we know what we're seeing. What we need to do is build a system that responds to what we're seeing so that we can meet need and children can stay in their community. And that, you know, that's my view as an officer rather than a political view. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Councillor Parkinson?
Thank you. Just to come on to the point around expanding special school capacity, it talks about being able to use vacant properties to hopefully expand and it gives the three that are mentioned in there. But maybe it's a question for councillor Catton here. In terms of the properties that we have currently, are there any properties that are potentially low occupation that could be utilised where we're merging resources together to save costs on the one front, but also to then utilise those properties for school expansion as well? Is that something that we have looked at?
Okay, thank you. So what we do is we work really closely with corporate property. So what, what we look at is whenever we're thinking of closing a building or repurposing a building, we have a process through which we can talk to corporate property and it happens the other way. If we have to close a school or, you know, again, that might be useful to our fire service. So we have a process where we can do that within the council and we have a process where we can do that across the public estate currently. So yes, we do look at all of the property that we've got available. We look where it might be suitable, we look where we can utilise that. And a really good example of that is Mile Cross in Lincoln, which we converted from being office building into an alternative provision. So corporate property work really closely with us on that.
Thank you, Heather. I've got a question. Is there a better belonging approach unique to Lincolnshire or is it being adopted or modelled elsewhere? Martin?
Thank you, councillor Roberts and Chair. So the initiative or the strategy is very much about Lincolnshire, setting out our vision of how we want children to belong and thrive in their local community. Every local authority, as I think councillor Hill mentioned, are grappling with the challenges of high needs, costs, capacity, sufficiency. So all are creating their own sufficiency options and strategies, all of them taking different routes. And they'll use different terminology, so they'll say things like send hubs, sorry, send units. Our partnership feels that a mainstream send hub feels a bit better than a unit. So we've gone with that title. Other local authorities are also investing in some of the work that we've done in the past around adapting and expanding their current special school estate. We've kind of maximised our current estate, as it were, hence why I needed to go down this road. So every local authority's looking at it, every local authority's making it contextualised to their local area. All, as Chair of the East Midlands Strategic Group, all have anxieties around, is it too much? Is it enough? How are we doing? But we all agree that it's important that we make hay and make progress with this. Because one of the things that we haven't necessarily touched on, but it's worthwhile noting, is that in a local area, we could expand our provision by 200 places, for example. But those places are accessible to Lincolnshire's children, but also anybody who's on the border of the county. And that goes back to that net importer kind of point I made earlier. So there's some regional work to do as well in terms of sufficiency and capacity.
Thank you, Martin. Can I just say, I'm sure I'll speak on behalf of the rest of my colleagues, Heather and her team, you've done a fantastic job. Really impressed with what you're looking at doing. And it's great that you've come up with this, this better belonging approach because I think it's exactly what we need. And as I say, I think you should be very proud, we're very proud of what you're doing and keep it up. Any more questions from anywhere else? Councillor French?
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate councillor Dilks' comments about the one child might disrupt the class for the others. I think probably on some occasions, that child might have been me in the past. But my question's really about, we've spoken a lot today about going further and perhaps in the past we didn't go far enough. I'd like to know, perhaps to get a good projection of the future, what we kind of impact not going far enough in the past or having that expediency in the past might have had on the children in our county. Perhaps councillor Oliver, you might want to chime in as well, I don't know.
I think, I think in terms of, in terms of, I think, I think your question, I think it's around if we don't, if we don't deliver more, what might the impact have on children? And the impact is that children will wait longer for those places. And so that's, that's something that we would, we'd have to address through what Martin said about meeting that need in different ways, which is often more expensive and not as, doesn't give the consistency to the children that we would need.
Thank you. Any further questions? Excellent. Thank you for your questions and comments. This now concludes the discussion of this item. I move that the board supports the recommendations to the executive as detailed on page 17 of the report. And I ask that our comments captured by the scrutiny officer be shared with the executive for his consideration ahead of its decision in November. Do I have a second there? Councillor Hill?
Seconding.
Sorry, you want to?
I'm just, on the recommendations for this committee, part two, it says, agree, any additional comments to be passed on to the executive. And we've had a very good and long debate and I think nearly all of it was, we were all agreeing vehemently with each other. I think the key, what I want to clarify from the committee is the issue of, do we ask the executive to consider? I think we should welcome the additional commitment, the renewed commitment to the Grantham scheme. I think that we should as a committee welcome that. But also, I think the committee ought to ask the executive as part of the budget setting process to look at whether the council goes beyond, spends more money on this scheme in addition to what it receives from the government. So I'm not sure whether everybody agrees with that or not on the committee. So that was my only query.
Thank you, councillor Hill. As I understand it, we don't need everybody to agree, all of the comments will, will be passed on to the executive. I think you're asking, is that specific comment going to be part of the comments to the executive? And I think it's been brought up enough times that it'll be included and considered by the executive.
Thank you, Heather. Yes, it will be noted. I ask that our comments, every comment be captured by the scrutiny officer, be shared with the executive for his consideration ahead of its decision in November. Do I have a second there? Councillor Brooks? Those in favour? Those against? Any abstentions? Thank you. That is agreed. Section 10, scrutiny committee work programmes. Reports on pages 63 to 92 provides an overview of the work programmes of our other scrutiny committees that the board is oversight of. Discussions on details of the particular items are appropriately held at relevant meetings of the scrutiny committee. Should you wish to comment on any of these, please approach our scrutiny officer following today's meeting. Proposal, the report is for noting, therefore, I move that the report be noted and that any comments be passed to the scrutiny officer following this meeting. Can you please raise your hands if you agree? Thank you. It is agreed. Item 11, overview scrutiny management board work programme. The last reports in our pack is on pages 93 to 106, provides an overview and contents of our overall work programme. This item is intended for information purposes. Please provide relevant details about the, providing relative details about the board's work programme. Actions. Members of the overview scrutiny management board are invited to consider the report and make comments on the contents of our work programme. I'm pleased to confirm that we have no amendments to report to the published work programme. Hence, I move the report be received and noted with the caveat of amendments identified in earlier debate. Can you please raise your hands if you agree? Thank you. This is agreed. It's a very short meeting today. So this is the end of the meeting and thank everyone for attendance. Thank you.